Hey, welcome to Voices from the Village. Sorry about the temporary technical difficulty, but that's the beauty of live television. You know, Voices from the Village has been the premier live show here at community television for 16, 17 years, and really without the help of Brian Schuman and people in the director's suite and all the camera people, we wouldn't have a Voices. So even though we have some rocky roads from time to time, kind of getting ourselves moving forward, Voices has a legacy here in Santa Cruz and community television that we're really trying to perpetuate and maintain. So I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to have with me my good friend and Santa Cruz City Council member, Chris Crone. Chris, welcome.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Good to hear you, brother. Good to have you here. Let's start with something that we had talked about earlier. You served as council in 1998. You were mayor in 2002, and then you had the hiatus where you're working at UCSC with interns, the environmental studies, I understand.
Yeah, still doing that.
And then 2016, you decided to throw your hat in the ring. The brand-new council came around, and yourself, Sandy Brown, were elected to council. What's the difference really between kind of governing and being a council member at the kind of the turn of the century and now? And now that you've been, you know, three years on the job here, second time around?
You know, thank you for asking that question. There's a lot of differences, and the city budget is twice, more than twice of what it was back then, you know, 17 years later I come back. And, you know, the reason I left is because I had young kids, they got older, they went to college.
Right.
You know, the mentorship, I had a great mentor in Catherine Byers.
Uh-huh, yeah.
She was the mayor in 1998, and she was just this mellow person. She could deal with everybody, all the advocates and activists who would come to the city council, and I learned from her that as long as you check in and talk with people, a lot of times before the meeting, they're going to have a different attitude during the meeting. They're going to feel heard.
Right.
I would say that we have a lot more pressures. Homelessness and housing were issues back in 1998 to 2002.
Sure, of course.
No doubt about it. We just have, if you look at this exponential growth of UCSC, and I think that's probably number one or number two issue within Santa Cruz. You have the, if you look at the graphs, you know, the city has grown very little, but university has grown enormously since that time. It is at least doubled in size. So those are probably, you know, some of the things that are different now than before.
And university growth puts a lot of pressure on the infrastructure, puts tremendous pressure on our rental stock, you know, as you and I both know, we just went through the Measure M that failed, but we tried to get some reasonable, workable rent control here with some just cause eviction language. Just because of that pressure that on our existing rental stock, when you have students, you have Section 8 housing voucher folks, you have, you know, as I often talk about, young working men and women and young professionals who want to, you know, maybe complete their studies at UCSC where you are and maybe stay here locally and be able to work and do that. And it's become increasingly difficult. I know you worked very hard and very diligently on Measure M, as did a lot of folks around here, but it just didn't, just didn't come to pass, pardon the pun.
Well, it had, it had definitely had some issues, and I think four or five of those issues could have been worked out.
Yeah.
And I think people talked about trying to work them out, but, and there was some negotiation that did happen before the actually went on the ballot or before they turned in the signatures. So it didn't happen. I think that folks may be working on changes now. I haven't seen anything yet. We still have a real difficult rental situation. And go back to that first question, when I was here in 98, well, I've been working at UCSC for 16 years now.
Yeah.
At the beginning of that, students were not living in their vehicles the way they are now. There is something called the slug movement, and they are getting organized, and they are demanding from the university to have a place to park because they do, are paying tuition, but they can't afford the $1,100 to $1,300 a month to live on campus. And to live in town, sometimes it's between $600 and $1,200, depending on where you're going to live and who you're going to share your room with.
And I think that's a legitimate question. I did want to mention that this is a live call-in show. We're actually live here, folks. Chris and I sitting here, coming into your living rooms. We are live as we can possibly be. I have at my disposal here telephone answering capability, 425-8848, extension 630, 425-8848, extension 630. So call in if you have a question for Chris. I'm sure you'd be happy to answer that. Now, Chris, you've been involved with, and really kind of carrying the torch for a lot of issues that are really important to the neighborhood. So one of them is the corridor plan that was talked about a lot even during the 2016 election, and it's been talked about subsequently, various iterations of that have come through, and there's a lot of pushback from people in the neighborhoods, particularly when I was campaigning, in fact, with you in 2016, on the east side of Santa Cruz, because I felt like they were really being, you know, forced onto this, this program. So what's happened with that more recently?
And in fact, 75% of the development that was contemplated by our planning department was going to be on the east side. They were talking about taking iconic buildings down like Charlie Hong Kong's, the Rio Theater, where Lillian's is situated right now.
Yeah.
I mean, this was shocking people. But it wasn't just, you know, the whole issue of NIMBYism and saying, oh, well, I don't want five-story buildings here. No, it was, it was a lack of a real affordable housing. If you build 100, I mean, in fact, later on during my term with, when it was a five-to-two council, they changed it from 15% inclusionary to 10% inclusionary, which means if you build 100 units, you get 15 affordable, but then they changed it to outside of downtown, it's 10 affordable. So people were seeing through this, and it was not an affordable housing project. So I have actually taken a lot of questions about that, and people were saying, I thought that was an affordable housing project. Why'd you want to, want to see the corridors plan go away? No, it wasn't. It was a very developer-friendly plan, and it's something we need to come back with, a, and a real affordable housing plan.
Right.
Like, and you know, some neighbors don't appreciate the Water Street project right now that's next to the Kiva House.
Yeah.
I believe it's 63 units. It's totally affordable.
Right, they were all affordable.
I personally would like to see a mixture of economic income levels within a project.
Yeah.
That's why, you know, you put, maybe build some and put a, you know, a penthouse on the roof.
Yeah.
And, you know, be able to sell that, and then that could finance the affordable units below or something. I mean, I don't want to see these income levels segregated, which does happen when you just have an affordable housing project. When you have 15% affordable, you desegregate income levels.
And, you know, we're going to come into a time now when Martine Watkins has been mayor for a while, and December, Justin Cummings, who is vice mayor, will be taking the reins. Do you think there's a possibility that maybe as you and Drew Glover, your fellow council member, have suggested, you'd take a fresh look at how agendas are set and to make them more flexible and really more responsive to issues that come up emergently, that really need, that really need to be discussed, you know, immediately?
Yeah, I think Vice Mayor Cummings has taken a mediation approach in his time on the city council.
Yeah.
I think, I think he's in a rock and a hard place because he's, he's learning, you know, he's never been in elected office before. He's learning by doing. He's, I think he's doing a fine job. He is a low-key person.
Yes, yeah.
And I think he's mellow, and you like him when you meet him.
Yeah.
And I think that the approach he will take will be maybe a more sort of calming council chambers approach.
Yeah. And it's interesting that, you know, those of us, you know, who follow politics, and I haven't been to Santa Cruz as a citizen for, you know, decades and generations as some have. I've just been back in town since about 1999, and as you know, run for council on a couple of different occasions. But, you know, I think you're seeing an opportunity, maybe, when we had the new council, yourself, Sandy Brown was elected, then two years later Drew and Justin came in. And we're hoping for some progressive touchstones, I think, but a lot of it is, it's easy to come up with ideas and support policies, but it's very difficult, as I think most people find out, and I wish Drew were here to maybe comment about this, to govern. It's one thing to organize, to identify policies, to work for policies, but to govern is a very difficult matter indeed, I think, sometimes.
Yeah, I call it fighting city hall from within. And so it is, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of staff people. There's the city manager. We have a city manager council form of government, which isn't, you know, people think, oh, the mayor can do whatever he or she wants, make a decision. It's much more nuanced than that. They can suggest things, they can, I mean, I think it's a, it's a bully pulpit job, and you can actually do a lot as mayor of Santa Cruz, more than you can as a council member.
Right.
And maybe more than you can as a board supervisor member.
Interesting.
But you do need to put out the thing, and, you know, whatever your idea is, and, you know, lead that charge up the hill, and you're hoping that staff is behind you.
Right.
And you have to, you know, talk to staff and work with them and meet with them, because you want them on board because they're going to carry out the policies that you're proposing.
Right.
So I think that if you're saying, the difference between like an activist and somebody who's in elected office, I think it is, you get away from single issues and you're into like multiple issues. Any week, you know, I just noticed I was writing, I read a column for Bratton Online, there's five issues at least on this agenda, these 22 items, but five of them are pretty important issues.
Yep. That's one thing I realized when I became active in town in nonprofits and various political causes and those kinds of things. When I ran for city council, I understood that you had to be well-versed on all these various issues, because you'll talk to single-issue people that say, well, we don't want the corridor plan in our, in our backyard, or we want more emergency bed spaces for the homeless, or we want more affordable housing, or these kinds. You have to be well-versed on all those things. Understand how to be able to respond to them in a way of saying, well, I think I can help you with this because city council is contemplating doing this, and we can, we can generate this program. And it's fascinating to really, to have that awakening, you know, to say, wow, you know, you have to know so many things about all the issues.
And you have a lot-
In order to really govern, you know, effectively.
You have a lot of judgments too when you come in.
Yeah, yeah.
But they quickly get dispelled if you're open to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you should be open to ways of seeing and doing, but I think some of the folks, you know, I'm here because I am trying to carry a voice of folks who aren't well-represented on the city council, haven't been for years. I think the current majority is representing certain interests in Santa Cruz that have either been shunted or pushed aside. It comes as a great surprise from a lot of people inside the institution.
Yeah.
Because I don't think they realized how intense and how popular some of these issues are, such as addressing homelessness in ways that, you know, real solutions to homelessness and real affordable housing, and pedestrian space and bicycle space. I mean, we've been doing okay on bicycles, but like, what about a pedestrian mall?
Yeah.
People have been calling for that for years. And the, the issues of students, students have never been represented in the numbers that they vote in, their issues such as metro bus service. You know, that's another thing that I believe the majority of this council will focus on more than other times in council history.
And it's worth noting that to their credit, council has come up with this wonderful metro bus fare program that's just kicking off here very, very, very soon. So tell us about that, because people, particularly who work in the city, should know about that.
Yeah, everybody who is a downtown employee now has, they can, they can be in this program. It's called EcoPass program, and they can get a free bus pass and jump bike credit, you know, so they, if you don't want to necessarily take the bus, you can take a jump bike. And it is, we're going to see, it might be a flop, but we're, we're going to look at the numbers. We're going to see if people are using the bus more.
Yeah.
I think it's a great supplement to help capitalize the bus system some more, and it gives people opportunities to use the bus and check it out. A lot of times people, if you make them pay something for it, they, a lot of people don't select it.
Right.
But if you, you know, we're making it free, we have a one, you know, this, this year, we're going to, it's a pilot project, we're going to see how it goes and see what the numbers look like, and, you know, I'm hoping that we are providing an alternative, alternatives.
Well, it seems to me that this is council really grappling with the question of traffic congestion downtown and parking, and everybody's always talking about that. And in fact, it really leads us into this downtown library project where they're proposing, or had proposed before it got sent to a committee to discuss it, to flesh out a little more, of building this monolithic structure on the farmer's market space, and then move the farmer's market over behind Qiantis and stuff. What do you think about that?
Well, there's a lot of controversy and talk and new organizations like the Downtown Commons Group that have sprung up to look at this and to help foster a debate around it. I think that the initial thing was a lot of folks did not want to see another five-story parking garage.
Yeah.
And what the new council did, because you had mentioned before on the show, like, what are the things maybe that I feel like this council has accomplished?
Exactly, sure, yeah.
Maybe what, what are you going to do in the future? But one thing is, we have, the bus pass program was one thing, but we also had, before we instituted that bus pass program, we had a study session on transportation, and we had some experts come in, a guy from Palo Alto, we had Adam Millard Ball, who's a professor at the university, who's a transportation expert, and they told us that we're not using our excess parking in a way that is maximizing that use, and perhaps we don't need to build a parking structure.
Right.
There's something called transportation demand management, and that we should be looking at that more before we go take that big step in building a $60 million parking structure.
And now, as you know, and I know, and as most people probably know, that parking fees in Santa Cruz is a huge revenue source for the city. And maximizing that would certainly be wise, particularly since, well, we've just recently, council has declared a fiscal emergency, and we're struggling. Mark Pimentel, who's the finance director, comes to council and says, you know, we're going to run a deficit this year, and we're going to deficit next year, and we're going to deficit next year. How's council reacting to that?
I think people are worried, but the thing is, we're taking in more money than we ever have, and we continue to grow in revenue. But the problem is, we have this thing called PERS, Public Employee System, of pension system, that those fees keep going up.
Yeah.
And it is outweighing, or going up faster than the revenue we can bring in. So right now, the retirements look like that's going to start leveling off around 2022, 2023, so then we'll have, you know, we'll be in the black, and right now, we're going to run some deficits before then, and according to finance director, dip into some of the emergency fund.
And we just passed a quarter percent sales tax increase a while back, and that was supposed to be used for infrastructure. Is that, is that having the effect that we, that council wanted?
I, well, you see all the projects around town.
Yeah, you do.
I think the gas, the gas tax has also been a boon to it, and I think we're getting even more money from, from the gas tax than from Measure S. So there's a couple of different revenue streams coming to fixing your streets. I mean, people are seeing their streets, I think they're getting paved, although I'd like to see Union Street get paved right outside of Pono. For some reason, that street has not been paved.
Yeah. But, you know, I think it's something the council's struggling with, because, you know, everybody has a project they would like to see, you know, the council is charged with, even though we're kind of a municipal corporation, and the city manager is actually the CEO, and yourselves are all board members, and you're kind of, you know, trying to make the legislation that's going to accomplish these various jobs. You know, you, you see a lot of people say, well, you know, why don't we do this more? Why don't we put some money in here? And you have to balance the money that you have and put it in a place that's going to really, not be visual as so much with people, but be utilitarian. And that's, that's a challenge for a council member. I mean, that's what you have to do.
And what happens when you have new council members who are elected, and they have different thoughts and different projects that they want to pursue, and maybe past projects were pursued by certain council members that no longer are either important to the current council.
Right.
Or have, you know, lived their life of usefulness.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so I think this, this group has come in, we want to advocate for tenants, for example. So we put $30,000 into Tenant Sanctuary, which will-
Wonderful program, yeah.
-you know, stand up for renters and go to court with them. Right now, I just heard about some evictions going on on Bixby Street today, and I know that the, somebody, they jumped right in and tried to mediate and work with, with the tenants who are all Section 8 clients.
Right. Another thing, and we just touched on it briefly, you know, in 2017, for those who were watching before we came on, you saw a panel that you were on, and Justin and Cynthia Chase, and I just was remarking that Cynthia Chase, when she was mayor and on the council, was part of the homeless coordinating committee. And so they issued a report in 2017 in May, and it talked about the things that they could do to kind of address homelessness, and a lot of it was really the low-hanging fruit kind of stuff. But those of us who were homeless advocates, went to council in Mass, said, we have to have year-round shelter. You got to have year-round shelter, that's what you need. And they kind of put that on the back-
Did you take your shoe off and hang on the table?
[laughing] Nikita Kruschev, yes, if I could have, I would have. But they put that in kind of a long-range goal, and yet I'm encouraged because right now we have 110 spaces at 1220 River, we have 40 bed spaces at Laurel Street Salvation, so those are funded until the end of the fiscal year, so functionally, we have 100 bed spaces that are year-round shelter. So I think we're making some progress. What I'd like to see is council get serious about a day center.
And I, and you have at least four, and I think seven.
Yeah.
Who are very interested and intent on getting a day center and a 24/7 emergency shelter. So we've taken some steps, we've, you know, it's, in fact, it might be on our agenda. It's a closed-session issue because it's over property negotiations.
Right.
So we are moving in that direction. I am afraid it's going to take longer than I would like, you know, to, to actually purchase the property, get it up and running.
Yeah.
You know, a year would be my maximum that I'd like.
And it was suggested, and I had talked to Drew about this, about the negotiation for a property, and it was apparently not public knowledge, and yet I think in the agenda report, I did see that there was a negotiation going on for a property that's, that's near to, let's say, Homeless Services Center, which is no longer called Homeless Services Center, by the way.
What's it called?
It's called Housing, I talked to Phil Kramer. Phil Kramer and I sit on the Chiefs Advisory Committee, and so we had a meeting, actually in closed session this last Thursday, and I said, Phil, you changed the name. He said, yeah, it's called Housing something, and I can't remember what the second word is, but he says that it kind of reflects their changing mission, whereas, you know, they were kind of a, almost a soup kitchen operation, but, but a, a maintenance, you know, a group, you go and you receive a service for one day, but you got to go back the next day and receive the same service, so there's no real transition or continuity. And so he believes really that it's going to change, it reflects the change in their mission, and so-
So it's more transitional housing kind of thing?
I think that they're going to be working more toward that. You probably have to ask Phil for the details, but he's very excited about the prospects of what Homeless Services Center, that's kind of been, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel for a lot of folks for a long time, and yet with new ideas coming through and how to create positive outcomes for people experiencing homelessness, it's sort of, it did get left behind, but it kind of stalled a little bit.
Yeah.
And it was more of an afterthought. 180 2020, which has done great work in housing folks, the most vulnerable, but, so I think they're going to be pushing that along a little bit, and I'm hoping that they got some of this homeless emergency assistance money that some groups that I know received to increase some emergency sheltering, and so we're hoping the city is going to be more focused on that.
Yeah.
You know, it certainly is an issue that is in everybody's mind. You know, we're, according to the 2019 Homeless Services Survey, which we just received the results from, we're fashionably down in numbers, but there's still a whole heck of a lot of people-
We're going to get some more money next year.
Yeah.
You know, Gavin Newsom, I think there's going to be another, at least 10 million more-
Ah, okay, very nice.
Coming to the HAP, what they call-
Right.
-Homeless Advisory Program, I guess, Committee or something.
Homeless Action Partnership.
Homeless Action Partnership.
And which is just kind of an umbrella of organizations that provide the HUD mandated continuum of care, that's their job.
Right.
So that's why they administer those funds.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think there, there are people of goodwill, you know, the, my more progressive friends, you know, would criticize me for being too easy on, you know, city staff and city council members on the homeless issue, but I do think there are people of goodwill who want to do good things. I'm not certain that they always know, you know, what it is that they can or should do.
Yeah.
But I think the, the want to is there. Do we have a call coming in?
No.
No, I don't see it. We don't have it. But we will, ah, they just want me to reference your, you know, 425-8848, extension 630. Call in and ask my good friend and council member, former mayor, and perhaps mayor again someday, Christopher Crone. So, Chris, we were talking, what's your vision for the future? What are the projects that you have right now kind of on your radar and the ones you would like to see moving forward as you move into, you know, you're going to be up for reelection next year? We hope that goes well, I'm sure it will, but, you know, some continuity, the things you want to do as we move forward.
Well, I'm, I'm really happy, Steve, that you're so, pretty confident about my future. I thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
I think we need to take a serious, you know, we've taken a serious look. The Housing Blueprint Subcommittee was a serious look at housing in Santa Cruz. I think we need to continue that and continue to define how many units of housing, of affordable housing, is possible. You know, we need to know how much affordable housing already exists. I'm, I'm given statistics that say there's 11% of all the units, 25,000 or 24,000 units of housing in Santa Cruz, 11% of that has some level of affordability. I don't know what the levels are.
Right.
And without getting into like the minutia of it, where the housing interim development and, you know, low and very low and moderate income levels, we need to set a standard. Can we have 500? Just same as homelessness, can we take 500 people, up to 500? Can we take, house 200 people a night? To do, you know, we need, and I think when we get to those numbers and we say, okay, those, that's reasonable, then I think council can live with it. And we have three sites right now that the city controls. We have right by, behind Qiantis, where the old Fifth Center site used to be.
Right.
We have the Tempico's Mexican restaurant site, and we have the NIAC building, which sits adjacent to Metro Center. Those three sites are, you know, they could be housing sites, they're ready to go. I know there's some wheeling and dealing going on and other before this council got on board.
Right.
And I think that we need to shift our focus and focus on affordable. I'll take some for market-rate housing if those market-rate housing providers are willing to work with us on significant affordable issues. And, and that's not saying we won't bring money to the table to build that affordable housing.
Right.
We will, and it's not going to all just put on the, the for-profit housing developer.
Right. And how much of that can you do? You certainly need, I had Bruce Van Allen on one of the shows a while back, and we were talking about when he was mayor in 1982 and '03, I think. Wow, you're going back. That's, maybe, you know, that's, he said that's the last time Santa Cruz has actually built any affordable housing. But he said it's so complicated. There's, there's so many moving parts, there's federal tax credits, and there's this, and there's that, and the other thing. How cumbersome is that process for you, even if you have some money to put on the table to where you can actually get to a point where you can, you know, put a, put a nail in a board?
Oh, I'm not sure what former mayor Van Allen was speaking of, because we have built some affordable housing since then.
Okay, well, we can take issue with that.
Where, where the director of the show used to live, 1010 Pacific Avenue, it's 83 units of affordable housing. Shaffer Road, there's another 80, over 100 units, I believe, on Shaffer Road.
Water Street?
There's the Water Street, that's not, you know, nobody's inhabited it yet, but-
But still.
But it's going to be.
Yeah.
So there are some projects that, there's one on the river as well, it's called River, Riverfront, I forget the, the address. So there has been affordable housing projects. Keeping up with that is really difficult, and, you know, there's a lot more need than there is, there are resources currently. But I, you know, feel like there's a council in place that is, you know, focused on this, and once we maybe resolve some current differences that are on the council, we're going to, you know, just focus and laser focus on getting some of those units built as well as addressing the homeless issue.
And certainly, the composition of the council, I think, is going to remain pretty stable, in my view, even with current movements to change it up a little bit. I don't think that's going to succeed. And when we have Justin coming in as mayor, you know, I think that there are good people there that just have to kind of rededicate themselves to working together for some common goals. And, and I, I don't see any, any real impediments to that, except to kind of, you know, in my view, and I'll tell you this frankly, you know, and I just wrote something that I did about a council really has to get back to governing. And I, I think that's what the people of Santa Cruz want. That's people put you in office, put Drew in office, put DeeDee Myers in office, put Martine in office, put all these folks in office, they want you to get back to governing.
Donna Myers.
To doing, I think she calls DeeDee on Facebook.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But to get back to governing, you know, doing the things that the folks elected you to do.
No, with all, you know, in all sincerity, there's a, there's a huge gap between the time that council members have to spend on the job because we're all working outside jobs.
No, no question.
And it's like, it's looked on as a halftime job, but it's not a halftime job. So we're all probably running around 50, 60, 70 hours a week because we have other jobs outside. And, and so it becomes really stressful and first of all, when you're elected, getting up to speed. Like you said, like there's all these things you have to know. You don't have to know about your issue that you got elected on, but you have to know about public works issues, you have to know about parks and rec issues, finance issues, look at the city budget. Most people have never seen the city budget. I mean, I hope they have, but right before they're elected, but most people have not seen much of the city budget before they're elected. So it is a lot of moving parts on the council, but getting back to governing, let me throw that back at you. What does that look like, getting back to governing? What would you, and I'm looking for some advice and oversight?
And for me, because I'm not an elected official and I'm not in public office, although I do spend some considerable time, you know, with folks and talking, I think everybody really, you know, can take a collective deep breath and say, you know, I think we have some serious disagreements here. But the people want us to do other than what we're doing now. And, you know, and so far as there is the issue of sensory coming before council again, that people are looking to table, in my view, again, as, as a citizen, I don't think that there's any mediation process that I'm aware of that really can mediate between basically intractable positions. So there aren't really any good outcomes to be had. So let's have an outcome now, you know.
Well, that's, yeah, what's the outcome? That's not a very rosy picture that you're painting, Steve.
The outcome, the outcome now is going to be, you know, sometimes it's better to make a bad decision than make no decision at all. That's the way that I have lived my life. Now, that might be a very good rule of thumb for an elected official, but I'm just an ordinary citizen. And what I see in, in our council is the impatience kind of of, of ordinary people that want the council just to get back. They don't want to hear about all these disagreements. They want to hear about, well, you know, hey, we're working on some affordable housing. We're, we're negotiating for a day center. We're actually helping people who are the voiceless, the left behind, the people who need the help that you can actually provide for them, the infrastructure being fixed, all the things you can do.
And that's all, that is, a lot of that's going on, but it's not good TV and newspaper or copy.
You know, and, and I'm sorry that that is the case because, you know, and I am as guilty as anybody that I have op-eds published in the Sentinel and I have letters published to the editor of the Sentinel. And so I'm, you know, putting my two cents worth in as well. But it seems to be this, you know, the constant complaint of the citizens have, oh, yes, we want to recall, no, we don't want, we go, yes, we want to, let those things just play out. Let the people who are elected to do the job, do the job now, you know, and without the encumbrance of having everybody picking at them here. And I, I don't think that that serves anybody's purpose as well, not as citizens and not as elected officials.
I think you identified it before as, do we have intractable differences? Are they political differences? I happen to believe they are political differences. How far apart are we? Is there, you know, we, people are saying, oh, well, there's all that stuff going on in Washington and it's kind of like spilling over into local consciousness. Is that true? I mean, are you, are people psychoanalyzing the council? I've heard a lot of people psychoanalyze the council in the last few weeks. So there is a lot, I mean, I think we've got the attention of, of the community. I think the community is concerned. I think council members are concerned also. I do think we have an opportunity here to do some mediation and do some conflict resolution. I have a rosier picture than, than you just painted. I do think maybe we can move on, for example, there is a Kaiser, Kaiser Permanente wants to move into two floors of the Cooper House. The fifth floor and the second floor. The second, there's a tenant on the second floor who doesn't really want that kind of business because the building's been closed before and it's been secure for him. And so they, this is an issue, like, so now we're offering Kaiser other locations, our economic development department is. I personally, the planning commission said, Kaiser, move in, go for it. It's coming to the council on Tuesday night. It's not really a political issue that I can see. But now you have, you know, this is where seven members have to come together and say, you know, this is really good for Santa Cruz or have our economic development director say, you know, that, that really, we, we need to have some other people in those places. Like, we want to center the computer companies in that building and this is a good space for Kaiser. And everybody's got to be open to take that advice. And right now, there's a, you know, a, whoa, whoa, what do they think? We, we have to develop some more trust, you know, and that's what I think mediation and conflict resolution would do.
You may be right, seeing through that lens, if you think that that's a path forward, then I, I wouldn't really doubt that. I do think that by and large, historically, you receive pretty good advice from your economic development people, from Body Lipscomb, I think that she has done great work, you know, for the city and, and with the redevelopment agency and then the successor agency and then economic development, and she has been, you know, steering that for a long period of time.
But there's a lot of things going on downtown that, you know, most Santa Cruzans don't really know about.
Oh, absolutely, of course.
And council members do and council members, new council members are here. And there's a whole metro project. There's something called the Paseo that's going to link downtown with the river, where, through where Tempico's used to be. There's the parking garage issue, there's the sports stadium, you know, an arena, like, let's, are we going to rebuild another or build another arena? Where is that going to go? Is it going to go in the same place? Are we going to do eminent domain on some places? Are they going to ask for that? You know, Front Street, you know, from SoCal all the way to Laurel is looked on as, you know, probably 1,000 units of housing. You know, that's, that's a huge, so there are all these things that are going on. I don't think, you know, this, the new city council right now is not of the same mind as it was five years ago.
Right. Is, in your view, because you've been around for a while and you appreciate the Santa Cruz of many years past, when it was, when it was a bit more, a bit less gentrified?
Tabby Cat, Tabby Cat Cafe represents a new thing that represents sort of like what we had in Santa Cruz before. Just an example.
But that's what people take. And again, as an ordinary citizen who is looking at economic development and housing and business development of any kind, in a very broad brush and saying, well, you're gentrifying Santa Cruz, I'm not comfortable with this. And I want you to, you know, make it more boutique, you know, I want you not to put these monolithic structures here and there. You have to balance all that.
There are so many people who want that, some people who want that, I'd say the majority aren't part of the process yet. So what happened to the corridors plan, people were shut out. We, we have to take it project by project and include people in the process.
Fascinating, you mentioned, and I've been, I was not originally a supporter of the downtown tent for the Warriors. I've come to understand that, you know, people in Santa Cruz have really enjoyed the Warriors being in town and it's been a good venue for that. And notwithstanding all the coastal, you know, things that had to go on to be able to keep it there after the five-year plan and whether or not they paid back the money they borrowed from the city, I do think that all in all, it has, you know, served to benefit the community in kind of, in, in some ways. Are they, are you seriously thinking about, is there, is there some thinking in council about a stadium, a permanent stadium somewhere in town?
Yeah, there's, there's been definitely conversations about that, about it on the same site and then, you know, they need, they need an indoor facility to practice. So that would be a separate gym on the same site. I, like you, I was skeptical. I call it the big tent downtown. And I just, they didn't do the environmental review, it was shoved through. But it has been, it seems like a net gain for the community. There's, there's a spirit kind of thing, you know, a hometown, like, hey, the Warriors, you get to see somebody here and then all of a sudden you turn your TV on.
I kind of wish that they had named it something other than the Warriors, but, you know, I mean, other than that, I mean, the peaceful Warriors or something.
You got to go back to Philadelphia in the, in the 40s or 50s, that's when it started and they brought that team to California.
I understand all the heritage and how it goes back. But, you know, we've just got a few minutes left. It's been great having you here, you know, we haven't sat down really and talked in depth about city. And I'm constantly fascinated by the workings of, of council and, and their efforts really to make Santa Cruz a, a better place for everybody. But you've got a minute or so, a couple of minutes, what's your vision for the Santa Cruz?
Well, again, I go with the people leading and the leaders following. You know, that would be my, if I had to do it on a bumper sticker, since I don't have much time. I think that we should create opportunities for folks to talk about issues, talk about their needs and wants and then, you know, focus resources on those. And I think my, the main issues that I, I deal with are, you know, real affordable housing, you know, taking care of the most vulnerable people in our, in our community, UCSC growth, because that is, that, I just heard that they're going to, the plan, the long-range development plan was supposed to be presented to the regents in 2020. Now they pushed to the 2021, which I think is a win for Santa Cruz because they can't grow past 19,500, which they're slamming up against right now. And we know that's been the big thing that, you know, students moving off campus because it's so expensive and they're pushing people out and not intentionally, but that's, that's been what has happened.
But that's the effect, net effect.
And then you have the downtown, a permanent site for the downtown farmer's market, that's a, a huge issue that we need to be discussing. And is the library going to stay where it is or is it going to move into a five-story parking garage? And so for me, though, and then pedestrian and bicycle amenities and working with all those, those groups, that, that's what I, I don't know if that's a vision, the vision is the people leading. But those are some of the issues, current issues we're dealing with, we're probably going to deal with them for next year or two.
And again, you know, I, I think that, I mean, I'm participating in the democracy, you know, I do, you know, talk to council members, you know, go to commission meetings, go to council meetings.
You're everywhere, actually.
I'm involved in things, so, so I appreciate the work that council members do. Don Lane once told me that he had only so much bandwidth because, you know, we've got all the, all the problems of, of a large city and a small town, you know, kind of government.
We're outsized, we play much bigger than we really are.
And you all have a lot of work to do. I mean, if anybody looks at the number of committees and commissions that a council member has to be enrolled in when they become a council member, aside from their duties and aside from the, the retreats and the council meetings, that now seem to really stretch out in time. We appreciate the work you do. Again, you know, if there's some way to get the council moving forward and back to governing a little bit more expeditiously than, than, than I see happening, then I'm happy to do it. But you'll be around, I'm sure 2020 is just next year and you will be up for reelection.
Well, I'm for healing.
I'm assuming, yeah.
I want to see the community, the council be, take a little, get a little healing and bring the community together. And I think that's what we, and then move forward and, and show some leadership.
Well said. Thank you, my friend, for being here. Thank you for your time and your service. Always a pleasure. Steve Plach, thanks for being here in this segment of Voice in the Village. Join us again next month when we will have another show talking about some of the really important issues and challenges that we're, we're seeing in our, our city and county every day. So see you next time. Thanks.
Go Steve.
Good show. That was terrific.
Really?
Yeah, that was wonderful. It was great.